Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to you all. This is a roundtable meeting of the City Council called for the purpose of the success report of the C2 Committee. I want to welcome you all here this evening. The rules of our roundtable meetings are that there is no public comment, but the public is welcome to attend. And we see that you have taken that quite seriously with Black Cat while here. We're going to be hearing a presentation from the Good Plan C consultants on C2, and there'll be an opportunity for the Council to discuss. So at this time, I want to ask the C2 Committee to act with a stand so we can recognize all of you who participated in this planning. I know you have been tremendous to give our attention as well. Thank you so much for all the time that you put into this and creativity and effort and hard passion. And I want to invite as many of you forward into some of these empty seats around the table as possible so you can be with us here. So at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Brian Murphy. Thank you, Brian.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Davis. This is, we will have some materials that we'll be passing around, and it's on the screen as well, where we're going to ask David Dixon to give a presentation in the seat of the committee. It's certainly timely, a chance for the Council to get a sense of a background or context for some of those thoughts that the committees come up with, the kinds of ways to envision the next iteration of Central Square. And I think it's also timely, given some of the potential development that may be taking place in the square in the years ahead, in the near future. So it's also a helpful time to get that kind of backdrop and information to the Council. So with that, I wanted to just turn to David Dixon to start, so there's ample time for conversation and discussion.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian, again. So it's a real privilege to be here, but I actually shouldn't be the one talking tonight because we've finished our effort and passed it on to the City and to a great committee for folks. And in some ways, I will hope that you have a chance to ask them what questions they asked me. In fact, if I can wander out at 6:00 and they keep going, that would be great.
I've waited a long time for this meeting. You leave, you leave, and I think I'll be revolutioned.
Well, I certainly don't want to, this has been a wonderful project. Think of that as a network, but there is better resourcing than I am or we are at this point. So what we would like to talk about is a little bit about the process. Describe the community-based vision, which it very much was, certainly not something I would have put together when we started. The framework and how we imagine that the framework, how we believe the framework can and should be brought to life. And I'm going to speak in headlines, and I know that whenever I get the privilege and honor of talking to, presenting to the Council that you'd like to jump in with questions and comments at any point, and I think that certainly makes the best way to do this. So please let me know if you want me to stop and cover something. So as a very short bit of history, as I think you all know, we have the good fortune of being able to build on actually a lot of work. The longer we worked, the more, best we worked with the work that has been done by the Red Ribbon Commission. After we started working with folks who were very familiar with the issues and opportunities and the kinds of visions that could be brought to life here, we did a lot of analysis. And I would say the majority of the time with the advisory committee was spent talking through things like the financing of affordable housing, the trade-offs between height and public benefits, traffic generation issues, and changing demand by parking and partnership associated with different folks. In other words, it was, I think, I believe, it was as data-based as we could make it. And if we didn't think of that, they all asked so many questions that it became, I hope that feels fair. And then we developed a vision. So the vision really came at the end of the process, not the beginning. And it was clearly built on a vision, of course, that the Red Ribbon Commission had developed. So it was probably, I'd say, refining and expanding on that vision, and that is being translated into zoning recommendations and non-zoning recommendations. So with that, the, I don't want to read to you, so you can all read the words. So the first bullet is about the fact that diversity matters so much to everybody that's been involved in this process, whether they're out of the committee or not, or somebody I would go into, or you when I've got a chance to present to you before. And that's about race and economics and age and lifestyle. Central Square is, I mean, the essence of Central Square is its appeal to a very broad mix of people all at the same time. And actually, a changing, I should say, and a place that has a changing face at different times of the day, into the night, and weekend versus week. And that's, people really value that. Nobody complained about too much noise at night from a club or something. They wanted the mix. That it's a place that is about old, about preservation, but it's also a place where people really sort of celebrate the new, have vitality. Somebody talked about, a couple of members talked about really making art, not art, but art and technology a really important part of the public realm, the public base of Central Square. People, I can't even say people, because it's really a very much a group effort. We talked a lot about being real about things. So one reason we spent so much time on the economics of what we were talking about is folks really, really wanted to believe, wanted to make sure that we were creating something that was achievable and therefore meaningful. So we talked about, a lot about what's happening to housing markets and what's likely to happen over the next maybe fifteen years, given the tremendous shift towards preference for urban living, and there's only so much housing in Central Square, and a lot of people want something that becomes more expensive, and the profound desire to maintain the diversity of the place. People didn't even say so accurately, they just said, so it can be a diverse place. And so one of the things we spent the most time on, I think, was making sure that we were being real about affordable housing. And we'll talk more about this, but providing as much housing as we could, opportunities to create a mutually large share of affordable housing, and also looking at sort of middle-income housing, folks who don't qualify for subsidies conventionally but can't afford to live in much of Cambridge, certainly Central Square. And we talked a lot about the public realm, I mean, this, in many ways, Central Square is two people Massachusetts Avenue, it's also, of course, the neighborhoods around. And the sense here is, was not to sort of decorate massed, or even to landscape, or even add trees, all those things are positive, but to really build on its role as a public space that really drew people to engage each other, small groups or large groups, that was actively the center of community. It is now, but even more so. So the vision statement is essentially, Central Square is tailored to downtown, a center for nearby neighborhoods, a vibrant cultural district, a sustainable urban environment that invites people from all walks of life to shop, to enjoy their payment and the arts, find community together, and more, and I should say, all in the same place. So I will quickly walk through the framework. Again, please ask me questions because I may skip over something of great interest and other people feel I'm saying the wrong thing. So in a place that is, diversity is wonderful, and diversity, of course, my, actually, diversity is not always a source of complication, but there are challenges to solve here about a Mass Ave that's as vital and diverse as possible, and neighborhoods that not only have a smaller or fine-grained scale, but also are quiet places, more residential places. And so to really find the right balance and the way to change, to transition from Mass Ave to adjacent neighborhoods, really demanded a great deal of time and effort. The Osborne Triangle is, in many ways, presents similar, but very different opportunities and challenges. It is directly across the street from a clearly very valued public housing development, since some of its residents certainly got involved in Morehead. And yet, a block away, there are new life science, technology buildings. So here, transition becomes really important, and bringing a place more to life for public housing residents and employees nearby and work for both is a complex, but I think it's a difficult challenge. So the broad approach to zoning, to the vision, to the plan, to the framework, however it looks at it, is to say that the heart of Central Square is basically from Osborne Triangle, from Jill Brown Park, and to Central City Hall. And that it is very much a matter of sort of a linear conception. There are, there is a heart of Central Square, which is not a place, it's not a circumscribed place, it is, in fact, a quarter of life and activity of a Mass Ave. And then there are very conscious transition zones to either side, adattues and character and height and all kinds of things. And then the Osborne Triangle presents a very different set of opportunities and challenges. It is certainly not intended to be an extension of Kendall Square. It is not a place that can be, I think, achieve what it should if looked at, and the same way Central Square is looked at, it needs to be looked at very neatly. And it too has a very important neighborhood edge that requires a very careful sense of transition from what is happening in the rest of it. So one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking about is, well, where do we change how? And so we operated under the premise that urban, because a lot more folks want to live and work in urban areas, and you've all seen this in Cambridge, but just to restate it, that we're, the real estate economy is, how should I say, going to make things possible and also try to do things that it probably hasn't, or even over the last decade before the recession, certainly for the fifty years before that. So that project that may not have been likely to change now put. And there are several ways to look at this. One is, we have a very dynamic institution, MIT, that owns a lot of property certainly in the Osborne Triangle and next to it. And they, as an institution, are clearly thinking at all times about maximizing the value of their holdings. We have other larger owners. This property, of course, the Quest property was recently bought. We have, and I'm going to skip over this topic, we have parking, the publicly-owned parking lots, where the City could decide to be the sponsor of change because it has opportunities it probably hasn't had in its history for those parking lots. And then we have properties a little more, and there are a couple of privately-involvement apartments, then we have properties a little bit more complex. So here is somebody, the divorcee, or who owns some property with public parking lots in the South. So a partnership there between the City and that owner could unlock all kinds of opportunities, or the lack of partnership could keep things the way they are, or the owner could do something more modest on his own. So that's something to think about. And it gives the public, the community, a real voice at the table, thinking about the future of that site. On the other hand, there are other lower buildings that frankly are multiple owners, small sites, and it's really hard to imagine their redevelopment in the foreseeable future. It just certainly doesn't expect the lifespan, lifespan of this plan because it just isn't economic. You need to build several times the FAR ability to redevelop it, and this is not achievable on those sites, particularly in apartment things.
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, of course, yeah.
So do you know, could you just, I don't know, where the rest of the lower west properties are?
Oh, gosh. Iran or Ben, you can probably do it more.
It's this parcel, it's the main Quest building. Here are, this parcel and this parking lot are part of their ownership, as well as the parking garage, which is right here, and then a parking lot that's here.
So you would note that the plan, which emphasizes the sort of heart of Central Square and residential transition, would say very different things about not only different holdings, but different parts of the neighborhood.
I think there is another building on Mass Ave that is a big part of the Quest properties, too. So we have on some of the Radio Shack lot and the lot behind it.
That's right, that's right. You're right.
There's too much to leave out.
That's right, no, that's right. It's on, it's right here, that's right.
Is it a name?
The Radio Shack?
Radio Shack.
It is Radio Shack.
Yes.
It's also a larger-scale site.
I'm sorry?
There's also more development on that site already. So is there less?
And there's a large lot in that.
We tend to originally pick that as one of the sites for change, but when you think about all the Quest holdings together, I think that makes sense as identifying that full set as possible change.
Isn't the number twelve sites?
Twelve parcels, yes.
Of that big question, if there's like four, five?
Yeah, there's several parcels in each of those clusters.
I mean, from the analysis we did, this is where significant change could occur. There's a lot of value in that piece, and these are clearly much smaller, and so they should live themselves into it. So they're going to be a broad strategy. So the vision framework, then, I think, boils down to a mixed-use emphasis in the core of Central Square with transitions to neighborhood, and that same focus would extend, I think, into a part of the Osborne Triangle. And then it meets a more research-oriented, mixed-use area, which again should have a very different character than Kendall Square. What I think is great?
Can I ask you another question?
Of course, yeah.
Just quickly, what do you think is the difference between pedestrian-friendly ground floor in Central versus Kendall? What, how would you, what does it look like? How is it?
Pedestrian-friendly ground floor, I don't think would differ very much. I think the scale of buildings, the permeability, the public access through would be very different. Is that, is your question? I'm sorry, there, no, there is more. I think also, in Kendall Square, there is, there has not been a perceived public interest, for example, in creating opportunities for small, I mean, it's a good idea, but for small retailers to preserve existing businesses, to encourage developers, to bring in sort of new, small, unique businesses, et cetera, and to negotiate with them. In all of this area, that's a very important goal. You're looking, is it making things worse than better?
I think that that has actually been, the reason that David is not pointing to Kendall as having those aspirations is because a lot of that is happening already, and because the existing framework doesn't, I mean, there aren't a lot of existing businesses to preserve, whereas here, there are, and there's a lot of people who are very attached to those businesses. So that is a much more significant goal here than in Kendall Square.
I finally asked a question because it sounded like you were trying to make a distinction between pedestrian experience in Kendall versus Central. But I'm interested.
No, actually, that's, I'm sorry, that wasn't the intent, but you did remind me that I think we have a much more sort of fine, we've taken a much more fine-grained attitude towards the street level public experience in Central Square as part of the Osborne Triangle, simply to, what Iran just said, in terms of the variety of businesses and economic range they might serve, because of the really fundamental, because diversity is a welcome value anywhere, but there's absolutely no mandate central to the character and spirit of this area.
Doesn't it also relate to the floor plate of the businesses, that even Kendall, you're never going to have a fine range of floor plate and substantial number of different small-sized businesses? And that that contributes to the sort of rhythm of Central Square is much more, much finer and something I think that would be lost.
You could require in Kendall Square that all four, that retail floor plates be no larger than a thousand or fifteen hundred square feet, and you probably wouldn't get retailers show up because they need a much more sort of vibrant environment. But also, the buildings don't let themselves, here, there are existing buildings, they very much let themselves that out. You'll be able to ask a question.
Well, we have seen the details of Kendall Square, like a zoning petition, but we certainly spend a lot of time on MIT's petition. And that is clearly what we're trying to do, on the first floor, create small spaces so that the retail is activated. And that's, so that makes sense, of both for trying to push MIT and their petition to put forward. So that's why I gave that physical.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, on Main Street, I'm keeping myself, on Main Street and getting what MIT's doing.
Main Street and that's one project, that's a huge part of the.
Yeah, that makes complete sense, and it's fully achievable there. I was thinking more, the more scattered retail elsewhere.
But I think, as I heard the question first, it was like, you know, why would you distinguish between small retailers in Kendall and Central? And my answer would be, well, you would distinguish between the two because each is really a unique square, as it harbors squares important to you, so it wouldn't be the same just because those places are distinctly different. I think in, in Central, as we heard from Henry Ferenc, who came up to the Red Ribbon, who was running for mayor of New Haven, so, blah, 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 but he really looked at Central Square and said that, you know, we have removed many, many of the historic facade, so there was even more character that we have over, that has over time removed. As you go down to Kendall, we're about to have a discussion about the three remaining buildings that may have any connection to history at all. So your basic, what you're working with from the beginning, this is an interesting one, I want to say. I think most of your particular comments seem to line up with what the movement called amplification. We want to amplify what's there, and we want to curate it, so you can use a term. And so I would have you go through it.
Okay, thank you. I should have asked you to answer the question. I would say, curate is much more relevant in Central Square than Kendall, if you can do it, say. All right. So, and now we'll go into a bit more detail about this thing. So there were really four, four goals that related to this vision. One, that, and these speak to different dimensions, in some sense, the diversity of Central Square. A place to live, it's a public place that is built, that it really invites community, creates reasons for people to come together, it is a place of retail culture, nonprofit diversity, but this falls a lot into a sort of role as a downtown for Cambridge, as well as a center for the neighborhoods nearby. And it is a place that probably needs to be better connected, there need to be better connections between the case of neighborhoods and the square, that make more sort of walkable scene between them. And that has to do with uses and design, a number of things. So as a place for living, I think the primary objective was to expand the number of housing units, the number, and therefore, the number of affordable housing units, and the range and types of housing available to folks who live right in the square or nearby. And I should pause for a second because this had to do with a lot of information we had over who was going to be looking for housing in Central Square, and certainly will be families looking for, but there will also be a lot of people who are empty nesters and millennials who seem to get older and older, who just really want to be in a lively place that offers a sense of community. And we have a choice, we can accommodate them, or they'll go competing with folks who already live here, and we felt accommodating was better. So some of the things we talked about were, first of all, making sure we weren't burdening this housing with parking requirements that frankly cost a lot, particularly because you, in effect, literally require low-grade parking in terms of how you treat FAR, and a nice $300 for other vehicles, maybe affordable housing. The inclusionary housing is never really a question, but we emphasize that very much in the spirit of Central Square. Let me get back to the third goal a minute. Add more housing in the Osborne Triangle and sort of Quest Lot to sort of reinforce the sense of neighborhood around the public housing community. So more sort of integrated, more integrated for the life of Central Square. Then there was a lot of conversation about middle-income housing. This was probably the area where people were most interested in accommodating families with kids. And it's the sense that, and this is quite a lot of these, I won't spend time on it, but that it was time to really do something to make some difference around the fact that there is sort of a category of folks who just can't afford to live in Cambridge, and everybody wants them to continue to be part of, certainly, the Central Square community. And so one of the prime values, if we're going to grant people density or height or other incentives, was to require back middle-income housing. And we can talk more about that if you want details, in which case I'll also rely on Iran, but that was, I think, a very strong intent. And not at the expense of the traditional quarter leads, in addition to. So as a public place to build community, this is really about making Mass Ave an inviting place that offers a range that appeals to lots of different kinds of people at the same time, or also over the course of the day into the night. There should be lots of, it's not just, it's a bench, a tree, and a nice sidewalk, aren't it? It is a bench, a tree, a mountain you want to sit next to somebody who's performing, so you might start talking to the person next to you about, isn't this cool? And attract certain kinds of people. It's a place that really offers invitations, and we'll talk more about how to do that. A lot of it has to do with programming, and, you know, boy, they take advantage of the fact that the cultural district has been cleared, and the business association is getting more and more active to really encourage them to take on that role and to build on the cultural district designation, and ensure housing relationships are neutral. Basically, make sure that if anybody creates anything new, it enlivenes the public realm around it. There just can't, it goes way beyond lane walls, it's activity. No banks next to a square, for example, to get to that level.
Can we do that? Seriously? I mean, that seems pretty, can you get to the level of no banks and store?
Well, Iran's going to say no, so I have to say, what do you think? Yes, as far as I know, officially can't.
I mean, I don't bank, but I'm opposed.
I don't know of a development in Cambridge that isn't negotiated. And, you know, we talked about zoning and non-zoning recommendations. So some of these are things that you may not, and then all of a sudden Iran's correct, may not be even possible, but there are two communities I know in this world that exert as a lot of influence, are really willing to engage developers, possibly you and Arlington or Virginia. And I think the more guidance this can provide to that process is about, does that make any sense?
Yeah, but the thing you have to understand, and no, you cannot, I don't believe, legislate no banks, because it's the reason why, and I think we've been really forward-thinking in this, we've tried to the extent humanly possible to involve the people who own the buildings, because ultimately, they make all of the decisions. And the banks pay a lot of rent, and they sign long leases. So you show me a bank, I'll show you a happy building owner. And my personal, and I don't think so, it's phone story. I don't, to me, banks move where there's money. And it's better to be in a place with money as opposed to one without one, in my opinion. But I do think we had to learn in these processes that we have building owners who own significant parcels, I'm thinking now like six seventy-five Mass Ave, who do not necessarily remember that they own that, and make rental decisions completely that we would never want. So we have to continue to connect with the landowners, otherwise, we're just talking.
I think that's really true. And frankly, to have a good friend in the Business Association adds another dimension curability to engagement.
Now, I'm gonna ask my colleagues. Ordinarily, we don't recognize the public, and I think we're still not recognizing the general public, but we have with us at the table members of the Central Square Committee, and I think we can consider the fire with the presentations, if that's okay with.
But Matt Munner, I think what you mean is that we always recognize public.
[laughter]
However, in this issue, we're at a roundtable.
Yes.
And a roundtable is set up by the council to be an informal back and forth discussion that the council is engaged in with experts and others it invites. The public normally doesn't come on that piece, but if there's some little time, it is, it may be possible, but these are also supposed to be two hours and then go home.
Well, I think, I think there's a, but I'm taking the distinction between the presenters, who include the members of the committee, and I think Iran intended for us to see them as part of the presentation. Is that right?
Thank you, they went to Cape Town City here.
[laughter] So, please introduce yourself and, yes.
My name is Patrick Barrett, I'm from Youngstown, I own the ninety-seven, I have some ASG, but just to chime in on that last bit about not being able to allow banks, you're right, council, you can't say specifically to Bank of America, you can't come here. What you can do in a cultural district is say, we can inform the businesses that are allowed here, which would include yourself, means we include your banks, and that's something you can do.
I missed the word you said. We have no formula business?
Formula businesses. Which is the definition that is applied in Intucket, and other, other places, like if you want to deserve a cultural aspect of the district.
And this is actually one of the recommendations that you.
Counselor Dever and, and Counselor Tullman.
Yeah.
And then Counselor Tullman. I wasn't sure if people were just jumping in, but I think I can probably help get everybody in.
Yeah.
Counselor.
Facilitate. I guess what I would say is, I think there are communities, I don't know if it's through this, you know, a cultural, what do you call it?
Cultural district.
Cultural district. Right. There are communities that have zoning and try to keep out various businesses like that. And I think it's absolutely something to look at, because for the barriers that Cambridge Square is suggesting, we may have owners who are not paying attention to their property here, while it's our job then to make sure that while they're, while they're so not attached to the relevance of their property, we're attached to, or more attached to their property and with the usages. So I, I would like to see actually the CDD come to us with a list of possible ways, in fact, to zone, to zone or regulate, how we can, in fact, can really have more of a narrative and control of what gets developed here.
I, I would.
Sorry.
Oh, please, sorry.
He's gonna respond, I'd love to have him respond, but thanks.
Yeah, I thought, well, okay. I think that's great, and I think it is the formula business sort of approach, which we did talk about, and I should have mentioned it, that is the one I most like, I'm most aware of. But the only thing I would note is that it's sort of closer to Counselor Reeves' comment. I ended up on the urban, the urban landestream jury for three years, so around the country looking at big projects. And it's really interesting, these are bigger projects, bigger, very sophisticated developers, but they won't put a bank in, they will only put in businesses that raise their rents upstairs, and banks don't do that. Cool restaurants, places to hang out, music, the same stuff you'd like in Central Square, unique stuff, that, they make a lot of money off of that upstairs. And if we could somehow institutionalize it, maybe with the Business Associations' help, so that there was that broad awareness, and that people realize that what's in the building next door affects not just that person's rents, but your rents, and the rents on the other side of the building. And, and I think that's a whole lot of sort of relationship building, and sort of sharing responsibility in terms of raising everybody's values. That's not meant to supplant your point, I think it would be just great to.
Well, I think, for example, Harvard Square, where there was a space, lots of, sort of thinking of one in particular, where a bank was really recording one property owner, is in a position where he was able to not do that and actually work with another tenant. But the neighbor said, hey, is that bank still looking? And then the neighbor brought the bank, is bringing the bank in right now. So I, I know the thing that's just about that, I think that there are always going to be property owners that for a lot of reasons are always looking to bring the highest rent. And I don't judge them for that, I'm just saying that I think it's our job to try to have a stronger narration of what we want in our community, we'll look at, we use all the tools that we have. I, I don't think it's just about the person who shows up to put the bank here, who got less rent and actually invested money to allow inside a property, these creative ways of supporting that, that's a lot of relationship with the city and with various businesses. The other person, whether they have relationships or not, their priority is getting the highest rent, so I think it's not just about building relationships.
I believe me, I, this need to.
No, no, I'm just saying, so I think the problem has to be, what I don't want us to do is say, no, you're right, let's keep building relationships, and sort of, sort of that. I think it's a multiple approach, and I think we do have to be really aggressive around looking at ways in which we can put into regulation or to law how we decide to track businesses as a whole.
Counselor Tullman.
I think we've already, we have a near consensus on banks in the council, I think we've already put in place in North Mass Ave, a limitation on the amount of square frontages in a bank to have. And if we can cap the number of fast food restaurants in Central Square, I don't know why we can't cap the number of banks in Central Square.
How's Kelly?
The idea of capping anything seems pretty clear, that we can do it through the table of uses. There's some very creative language in there about floor size, for example, being twenty-five hundred square feet max, or certain types of establishments. I don't think any of this is groundbreaking, I think it's supportable by law, and I think it exists to some extent in our current zoning, and I don't think that we can get a clearer picture from CDD about what kind of zoning changes might get us to where the council and they seem to want to go.
There's a, a bank in Ashmont, the Ashmont Station in, in Dorchester, that is a bank plus cafe. Okay. And it's, they were pushed.
I, I was just gonna say, if I were gonna pick on other controls we might have, it would, it would be, the biggest enemy in Central Square is the property owners who leave their square retail vacant for long periods of time. And they are both institutional and private ownership, and even when ownership is active in what's going on, vacancies persist. And, and that in Central Square is the biggest problem we have, because perception caused by low vacancies is that things are down at the heels. So as long as Blockbuster is vacant, there will be people who walk by there and make some sort of judgment about what's not happening in Central Square, despite the fact that there may be dynamic and dramatic plans for it. The same was true with the Mozza Veggie Plant site. It just was vacant for almost five years, that's just too long to leave a first floor vacancy in an area that you want to be divided. So maybe the council should consider as well, or when you become as community development, with things considered, maybe we should invent a way to control the vacancy rate, so that you, if you rent, if you don't rent your first floor retail a certain amount of time, maybe you should have to pay or give it to us or something draconian.
Well, so if you were, if you were running a mall, and that was going on, you would put up a sign, and you'd say, under construction, or this is the plan for this area, and you would, and, and so the public, as they went by, wouldn't make assumptions that are true, first of all. I mean, for example, the H market is, everybody wants to know what's going on with the H market, is there a sign up that says, H market, under construction, expected to, it, it, when there's a unified approach to, to management space, those managers seem to know you need to say there's an explanation, and I think that's something we could fix probably pretty easily. That's why speaking to the property owners is saying, you put up a sign saying, what's going on here, or when you expect this, this to actually be filled.
I think you make a great point, that H market in fact is rented, but if you walk by there and still think it's vacant, it's well attracted to coming online. In this thing that we, comes as a community development, also might suggest that when first floor retail is vacant, it ought to have some kind of beautiful signage, art, or window covering, as you even saw on Prospect, when the brown paper fell down from the coming nightclub, it looked like the end of the world in that room. So, so why shouldn't we have things that protect visually the area in that way?
I think we could do that, that seems to be within reach.
The plan actually, right now, says, and, and you might all look at, point this further, it's, it's not quite as, as determined as the language for Kendall Square, but it says basically, at six months, the plan says, the city, the community developer should step in and help find somebody, an arts organization, to somebody who needs space for a while. I would also, you know, you're sitting right in front of Cambridge, that, that, what's that? Central Square, what am I saying, okay. That, I've certainly been aware, and I bet this would have more energy than whatever to do it, that they've acted as a broker to find somebody who needs space for a couple of months, you know, children's art gallery, I mean, things that are really valid, we're not just, that would love a really public location. So I think there are lots of ways to deal with this, and it's, it certainly, and, and if an owner wants to wait for higher rent for six months or eight months, then it's really valid to put something else in there and meet that. And, and, I just wanna, it's not, it's not just good public policy, it's only fair to the, the rest of the business community, yeah.
And the public.
Yeah. And I, I'll just, we back very quickly, earlier discussion, one thing that's different now about, that even than two or three years ago, is there's much more recognition, at least, the more sophisticated the developer, there's much more recognition of how much activity across street increases value above. So that hasn't been a commonly accepted principle in past years, but it's something I think you can use now that wasn't available.
Saul, I'm a member of the committee. I mean, I'll stand second to no one in the heat of the banks and phone stores in Central Square, but before, you know, we start talking about living businesses here, I think there's a, a first step, which is that the retail environment of Central Square has to be made stronger, and has to be made stronger by there being more people, and, you know, you make it stronger with more people, by creating housing there. I mean, it would be a shame to have, you know, banks and phone companies and still not have, you know, a strong enough retail environment to attract other businesses. And I mean, that's, and that's one of the things, you know, we, we kept hearing in this, in the committee process about, you know, adding people to enliven the square. I mean, the square looks busy, but during the day, a lot of that is just simply people using it as a bus station, et cetera. And, you know, I mean, Robin can tell tales of which restaurants are struggling to stay open at lunch, or at other times, but there just aren't enough customers, you make customers buy any, you know, housing, and then, you know, have a deeper retail base to build.
But Saul, it's not just a bus station, because we have the MBTA to come to the Red River, and they told us that Central Square is like the third most used station in their system. So we're a, a grand central station plus other, plus terminal. So we do have people, but I think the thing, in fact, is when Woody Clancy goes away, they totally have them come together. The thing I want to tie to that, the big ideas that I know of, is that we were not prepared in Cambridge to have a dense, bring more people, four thousand more apartments to Kendall, and a thousand more in Central. We, nobody living in Cambridge would have had that idea if you didn't come and say, if you want all this long, list of things, then this you must do. And to my, for my, I think you were the first people who kind of put together all these locks and declared them not good things, and then suggested that those locks could result in more of the things that we say we want. So those were two big delusions, because those are big ideas that we really, I had never heard of any, that we would be talking about our public parking lots, giving them away, building them away, how terrible they are, that all came as part of this discussion.
Can, can I just, I, I just want to make sure, I know we have a sentence, just one more hour for this meeting, and I, I bet there's at least two more hours worth of comments we'd love to make, but I think we should try to keep some discipline and make our way through the presentation. I'm so glad you stayed at six, we, we.
I will regret saying that for meetings. So I think, one thing, this is sort of symptomatic of what enacted, that I think we talked a lot about, which is, change in the form of a whole bunch of increased demand from more affluent people can be very scary and disruptive and destroy a community, or it can be a very powerful, powerful course to manage and use. And we chose, hopefully, course B. So, you know, maybe that people haven't looked at developing the parking lots before, because there wasn't the strength in the market to really give you the choices you have now. But boy, do you have those choices now, so. All right. So in terms of the public realm, just a jargon word, but, you know, sidewalks and parks and things, now one of the things that this very reflects Kendall Square, that it's not just public realm, it's particularly for diversity that matters, it's, it's a public realm that allows you to do a very wide range of things. Somebody, you were saying, we need a place to pause, okay, which meant, for a couple people, just to sit down and have a conversation, they've just run into each other, they're out for a stroll, and they, somebody wants to sit and watch something. So, so places, you know, then maybe that's where the bench and tree, you need just a place to, to hang out, in a very sort of informal fashion can really make a difference. Public art can be a very individual experience, a whole class full of kids can walk up and down Mass Ave and, and learn from each other and then the stories. Outdoor dining is kind of a cliché, but boy, do people love it, and, and it does all kinds, it brings people together, it shows life, you can actually see the diversity of a place, when you see who's sitting, and all kinds of things. But then there are parks and festivals, and the parks and festivals can be more interactive or not, depending on how actively they're programmed off. But I think we all are in a much more diverse society, we don't tend to wander into the same place to do things with each other, because we have all different values and ways of living and all that, but if there's something we all like, then we come to it. Like, this is my, hey, great kids play fountain, will attract kids, a bit of a color and age, et cetera, and their, yeah, and their parents come with them. I mean, there are things that actually then invite community when it's harder to do. They used to do, we used to build whole neighborhoods, look the way any Catholic steelworkers, that does not work anymore. So, and given diversity of Central Square, that puts an increasing, I think, responsibility on programming of parks, and I keep pointing to Robin, but to have a way between the city and the Business Association to really make sure this place is constantly inviting all kinds of people, so.
So I just want to do an advertisement, which is for the Taste of Cambridge, what's the date, Robin?
June thirteenth.
June thirteenth. Last year's Taste of Cambridge in Central Square was an incredible, exactly what you said, mixture of people, excitement, and was not directly in the square, but adjacent to it in, in the University Park. It was a tremendous success, just really, you are looking at a.
We also have a National Poetry Slam, and the Together Festival, and the Return of the World Spirit in a new and different form, so.
Wow.
It's cooking.
Late at all, as to what the Return of the World Spirit is. So there are opportunities for, basically here, it is making the most out of it, for a very sort of rich mix of spaces. Here is a park that is probably.
That's the University Park, though.
That's right.
Yeah, this is the University Park, okay. So this is, this is a danger of being underappreciated, and underused, or move that way, but boy, does it offer an opportunity to do that. And has a wonderful owner host, I'm sure they're here, okay. So, and then a couple blocks away, we have Jill Brown Road Park, which is a very public, great sort of hangout place, and boy, with the right uses here, and they're already happening, it's still tables out and great things, and more can happen. And then here's a neighborhood park, and then each of these can and should be very different, and I, we can all still talk more about what this should be, but it's an opportunity to, okay. Then here, if this can really be public, and it should, is, is a garden, is a very different kind of experience. You know, along here, there should be a whole variety of experiences. Could we create, if, if a major development happens here, could part of, I'll use a bullet term, the price of entry, be created as a public group, which is, and I'll show you, it just belongs to the community, to do with what it wants. There are all kinds of, of opportunities in what's here and likely to come, so.
I was going to say, David, one of the things that happens, City Hall has like a microscopic lawn, and it's a hill, and it's covered with children.
Yeah.
And, and every afternoon, and there's a tremendous need from the daycare centers in the area for that kind of park space, too. I mean, they, they make use of City Hall lawn, it's kind of a miracle.
Yeah.
But, but I'm not sure that anybody spoke up for that need, because we hear it every day here.
Yeah.
And, and I think that looking at some of these parking lots and so on, or what have you. And I think that, looking at some of these parking lots and so on, or what have you, if you really truly wanna be family-friendly somewhere, that's a crime, you said, for that park space.
What other thing that people talked about is, there are a lot of people in Central Square who live in multifamily housing for other reasons, don't have young, and they can't make snowballs and throw them at each other, you know, they can't lie out on the grass, et cetera, and City Hall Lawn is a great place to do things like that.
A little.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, yeah. But, yeah. So, what I'm gonna do is talk about a couple of public spaces, and I think Carl Brown Plaza has had a great deal of discussion, it's certainly commanded a lot of discussion, and I'm gonna try and sort of, I think, capture the core. There isn't anything that's happening there now that shouldn't be happening. It belongs to everybody, it's their incredible range of people, from people with no place to live, to people going off to very high-priced jobs, and there are all kinds of things happening there. But it doesn't, it's, in its current configuration, it's hard to host the community anyway. There's, there aren't reasons for the folks who live here and are part of the middle of Central Square community to be there very much. And partly, it's just the configuration, the sort of sculpture in the middle is kind of in the way of being able to use it. The, I use the B-word, the banks don't spill activity out. It's hard for people to circulate to the buses without moving right through the area where some activity could be occurring. And I, we actually felt, in an ambitious way, that reconfiguring it to really program it, not so much in the idea of, well, active programs could be carried out there, but to create places for different people to do different things that work, and re-chem it yet, could make a very real difference. And, and nobody who's there now shouldn't be there in the future. Saul in particular, I mean, I wanna think that everybody really embraced, which is, would also be a great place to, it has very nice sculpture, and it's still be there, but to display the vitality of culture in Central Square by using something that is about art and technology. And this is a place where Central Square could really announce, you are as cool as it gets. And I can say it's as about, as much about innovation as it gets as a community, 'cause that, you know, it doesn't, it's not visibly displayed, that'd be very important. So then we come to Joe Brown Rome Park, and this is a place that is felt to be quite successful. It is quite successful, it was a really great idea, and successfully carried out. Probably it could be enriched, you know, certainly, I got you, to the extent that the developers' requests, hoping would come in and talk to folks, which of course we'll have to, is a great chance to use leverage to have the most active interface and maybe programming responsibility, et cetera, for at least, I mean, more dining and stuff like that in the park. An opportunity for business association or others to carry on some program activity, or they could have an area that works as a state, just having electricity and lighting could, might could be used at night in kind of cool ways. And then, in some ways, this isn't the most, they're all, they're all most important, but the university, I think this should be called University Park Park, but Park Plaza. I discovered, actually from Robin, and other folks here, how much went on there. I had no idea, actually. And I don't think this is important, but certainly the folks from Forest City, I think it's fair to say, were very inviting of more community use, and did not say that it's a space just intended for their tenants at all. And I think we talked about, you know, wait, find science to tell you how to get there. But it is just a great place to program, and to really use for neighborhood activities, 'cause it's big enough, it's quiet enough, it's not quite on Mass Ave. And it's, it's a potentially much more useful facility than it's been in the past, and that's.
Yeah, if I could say that, you said earlier that one thing that is a wonderful programming magnet is a children's park for the water feature.
Yeah.
Well, if there ever was a park needing a children's fountain of water, we could use that. And back in ancient time, as that park was being built, I remember saying to the principals of Forest City then, if you ever put a fountain back there, like the one near the Pompey Do Center, with the loops and the scellum and all that, that, 'cause otherwise, who knows if it's back?
Yeah.
It would need to be a destination, but as, and you were saying, hey, if this green space the kids could go to, they have few schools all around there, but they're not in that park. So it's, these ideas need to join each other.
You should, and have you, I think you've ever been over, wandered over the Christian Science Center on a summer day, a little air ground, it's like a little United Nation, it's fascinating. And.
That's waiting pool in Great Falls.
It is waiting, I don't remember who says, "Don't wait." And this is, I don't, I can't speak for Forest City, but I would, I'll come back to the ULI experience, which is talking to developers, but they kept saying, the developer land war started out with a much more privatized sort of public realm. The great atriums were not something the public could wander into. And they discovered that their tenants wanted more people wandering through. They wanted to be more enlightened, they wanted to be more city. And so hopefully, we've entered an era where things that may have seemed like that there were conflict aren't anymore. So then we come to, to Mass Ave, and at signature design elements, you know, things that really distinguish it, and I think that's something that could deserve its own design study at one point, but it's a pretty special place, and it's a streetscape and street furniture, lights, et cetera, are not, they don't reflect that. They're part of the Mass Ave corridor, rather than Central Square. Outdoor dining, I'll come back to parklets, I think public art should have a much more robust role here. And that's not just, that doesn't mean just put a nice sculpture up, that's a wonderful thing, but interactive public art. I mean, there are some things, they're so dumb and simple as their, their lights that are embedded, sit in the ground, basically, and you tap them and they change color and make music. So kids run up and down, and they get their own, you know, that may not be what we want here, but there are just things that can really help bring the street to life. And thinking of, yeah, art and technology that tell a changing story.
Well, the MIT Science Museum could certainly be a partner in that.
Oh, okay.
I mean, who, who has the job of making that? Oh, Robin, oh, good, Robin, there you are.
I didn't want to speak for her, but, but, I mean, that's, yeah, okay. So, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep, but there is kind of magic to having a strong city, an active community, and a business association, a bid in the middle, they can accomplish more than anyone could belong to. Clearly making sure that all storefronts are, you know, the more interactive they can be. But I then wanna come to parklets, and I think we've probably talked about that, yeah, okay. I'll come back to that in a minute. Okay. So then the other thing that we talked about, this is in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and, and you remember who paid for this, the city? Okay, who saved? Was that your first? Oh, okay, oh, so the Development Corporation slash DID, basically built this. And they built a very public location. It has, you know, kitchen, so you can serve food, it's got electricity, lighting, et cetera. It's a beautiful space, and it is always being used by someone, and it's hugely valuable. And we, as we were thinking, this isn't a recommendation, we've made other places, that, that Central Square in particular could use the space that literally belongs to the community to program. That there's probably are spaces around it you can use, but something that's just really delightful and cool, and with great connections, probably to, to Mass Ave itself, so that activity can wander out, but it is literally the community's way. And I suspect that you'll have development of such value that it could afford to provide this better.
And messaging and buddy, they have, they have, I have a picture of one of those from Lexington, Kentucky, an outside public market arcade, and I think it's perfect for us. We need such a thing, and we need to, but we need to put it into, I don't know, a development as a, as a, on a menu of things that we want from a developer to provide, or that we put into one of our parking lots, but as I said, in Lexington, Kentucky, they use it as a public market some of the time, but the rest of the time, it could be used for other things, and, I mean, there's certainly a huge call for a space for a public market for us, and, and beautiful, too, these things.
Counselor Simmons, I, when we were in the leader cities in DC, I told our giver a gift the council decreed may, which is, on a Saturday, we walked over, afternoon, we walked over to the Eastern Market, and it was like so, and it was a beautiful day, but these markets offer something for everybody, and all this discussion about price, price points, they, you know, there's something for everyone indoor and outdoor. There, and also, you see, they have like unique things, so I brought back two lanterns from Istanbul, that I had never seen anything like that here, and I was determined to get them on the plane and get them here. But my point is that other marketing, we are really behind. There are other cities who have given themselves that gift, and it's marvelous. The one eastern is owned by the city of DC. DC owns three markets, one of which is in Georgetown, too.
Baltimore has a series of public markets that are hard to, they have trouble operating, and they're really set up right, but they're equally.
I think they're always subservient.
Yes. One nice thing about public market also is that it can really take on the unintended flavor of the community around it, so something in another part of Boston may be very different than what's here. We've talked about programming, this is from Asheville, North Carolina, that I have a master plan that really gets programming, like, partly because every other person in the community wants to perform, et cetera, but, but I think I have an awful lot of that here, I would bet anything, not Berkeley, would provide students. And then something that, I was really fascinated by Parking Day. I hadn't actually known a lot about Parking Day, and which was about creating, in fact, temporary public spaces, parking spaces, that people get all kinds of things with, and it would be really kind of cool. And, and organization got very involved. San Francisco has a very interesting program where the city basically takes proposals from businesses to create parklets, and this is an example of one right here. And they, I think they're, they help design the furniture or whatever, and they'll sort of share the funding, or sometimes the business funds, and what they're getting is the approval. But all these cool places pop up around San Francisco, a little, you know, a sidewalk that's a little too wide comes to life, or there's an alley next to a building, and I can't think best, I'll figure out this, but I know in Central Square, people would find opportunities to do things with little bits of public space, and sort of interact with the business there, or the business association finds a reason to use it, and it may not be there for twenty years. It may be a useful parking lot, may even be something that's there sometimes a day and not at other, so a parking lot's actually an activity film to fill it. But, but the idea that what we're doing can be very much of the day, doesn't have to be permanent.
So do you ever get to talking and hear about how people actually want parking, but we want many of uses from the existing parking? Do you talk about how we, how much parking we need to have, and how it's gonna be provided? I know it's kind of boring, but.
Yes, so I'll come to that, but, but it's, we're, we're probably more aware, in fact, people are likely to be driving less, but I don't know.
We, we did look at parking, and I think in general, we don't, certainly don't think that the on-street parking, given all the other things that are programmed for it, things like subway, when it takes up, you know, those are more important uses right now for Central Square. But there are a lot of sections in Central Square where the sidewalks are pretty wide, so we see that as a much, much more real opportunity for these parklets in Central Square.
I hate to be an advocate for parking, but, but in terms of the restaurants and, and weekends and evenings, I would see how they do survive without having a parking.
I'm arguing with you, yeah. I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, as much as, we might try to focus on the other things, and parking is kind of boring and controversial and everything else, but I think you can really take into account some of the economics of the vitality that we're hoping for.
I noticed, well, I was just saying, in the February issue of Boston Magazine, there's a big article about Tony Moss's share of a crazy man and his operation. And some are borrow, there is an article, is that the average bill for two people there is $200, $200, and tasting menu over $350, but well, that's surely not just Cambridge people. And those people must be coming from somewhere, and I'm not advocating that we build Cambridge for $200 meals, but we definitely have a range of things going on here, and the suburban I-21 that come into somewhere interesting must drive, I guess. So the parking, and these places do seem to have valid parking, I haven't really know where they, oh, some of it, I think is hosted at places like Forest City, where they rent space from them, so that's existing parking, it would.
And during the course of this analysis, we asked ourselves exactly that question, and actually, Sue might wanna speak to this more, but the traffic department did an actual survey of utilization of parking, and found that while there is capacity during the daytime, at nighttime, all the parking, all the public parking in Central Square is actually being utilized. It's awful. And they even cross-referenced with the license plates for residents in the area to make sure that it wasn't just residents parking after it became free to park there, and they did not find a lot of commonality there. So clearly, it is people who are not Cambridge residents who are using those parking lots. So we are very cognizant of that, and in any scenario, we would, especially when we talk about redevelopment of parking lots, I think having a much deeper analysis to figure out what the utilization is, and making sure that that gets accommodated in some way, that that number of parking spots get accommodated in some way in the future would be an important part of that.
I think there are more other things that, even sometimes for people to forget is, when you say a surface parking lot should be changed to something different, it doesn't necessarily mean that all the parking goes away. What, what we're really saying is, the surface itself should be something which is much more consistent with the goals of what the neighbors are saying they have for the vision of Central Square. But there is still space underneath, as there are throughout Cambridge, so it's, it's not assumed that all parking will just go away.
She's saying.
The assumption is that you will have parking underground, and you need to be obviously thinking about how much of existing parking do you need, what does the new use need for parking? And then the other thing I think which is really important is the opportunity for sharing parking. So if you have daytime parking that is used predominantly in the day, and then there's nighttime activities that don't need daytime parking, you may be able to use one space for two different functions, so that you're trying to utilize the surface space for the kinds of buildings and land uses and activities that are consistently the vision for Central Square. Suzanne?
If I may, I think it's also very important to think about pricing strategies, because if you provide very low-cost parking, or as has been the case until recently, free parking after six o'clock, you will inevitably attract people who wouldn't have other options. And if, if the price of parking was more, maybe you wouldn't think about your options. So for example, I might decide to drive from Cambridgeport to eat a crazy man if I can park there for free, and I might make another decision if there was, that the cost of parking was at the right price. So I just wanna make sure that we're not thinking that we're at maximum capacity and for businesses to thrive, we need to provide more parking. Because once you start introducing parking that's priced reasonably, you might find that people will make decisions that are different than the ones they're making now. So don't forget we have bad weather, too.
Granted, we have bad weather, granted, we have, you know, parking, but I think we need to, with parking, we kind of have to go a little bit past the traditional paradigm of parking, this is a business, need parking. People are keeping the way they use cars, people are keeping the way they travel, people are walking more, people are using public transportation. It's also been proven, if you go everywhere, that the more you provide accessible parking, the more will overdrive, which brings more cars. And, I mean, you can see everywhere in dense city, in way denser spaces than anything you see in Cambridge, where there is no cars, but there's tons of activity. And you can see it in Barcelona, the North End, the car, yeah, it's a night merge park, no one drives. People are coming from all over the place. So I think we, I understand this is kind of, it's hard to deal with, it's a, it's a change, but I think it's a change that in the interest of sustainability, in the interest of reducing traffic, in the interest of. of reducing traffic, in the interest of our environment and in the interest of livability, we need to figure out how to reduce cars, people driving, and in the interest of human health. So from that perspective, I would say that yes, there should be parking, but maybe we don't need to kind of just overprovide it. Because that's how Susan's thinking about it.
I'm just going to add a very prescient footnote. Because we're not in a position to determine contributing demand in the study, but we knew and because there are quite a range of perspectives on this, we, we used the information we had, I think, to make really pretty good policy recommendations. First of all, because new housing in Cambridge can succeed with much lower parking ratios in the past, and I think we felt that one half a space per unit would be adequate and demonstrated to work, that meant, for example, that if the parking lot were redeveloped, we didn't have to create as much new parking. And when we looked at the economics of redevelopment, we frankly included the cost of replacing most or all of the existing parking places below as part of the cost of development. You could all choose not to replace all those spaces. And I think anybody who's used the word shared parking is making a very good point because there are, there is parking that could be of great value that is empty at certain times. But, but if necessary, then, you know, you reach a point where the values are such that you can afford to put parking below and you'll find someone who will rebuild. Those dollars then aren't available for other things you might want, like affordable housing etcetera.
This is about parking. So in that context of the MIT position, you know, where we're looking at an actual policy position and numbers of parking spaces per state, just to thirdly, they hold units, housing units. You know, I was advocating for, exactly as we're talking here, dropping down the required number of units. And the, the folks at MIT said, well, we would love to, you know, because it actually saves them money if they don't have to buy a parking. But they said financing folks aren't yet fit with this way of building. And so I'm just asking you for your expert, for your experience with this, is that really true? Is there a disconnect between financing and do they have this urban mentality that you've got to have one parking spot per unit? Is that going to change too?
No. I think, wait, 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 wait. Yeah, okay. So Iran is reminding me, she said that they're proposing what been recommended was point five. If, without getting into bits of that discussion because we're not part of it, I would just note that there is certainly housing being built for five spaces per unit in this country if this were the walking system transit. And what we have recommended in other cities where we've worked and it's produced exactly the results you hope it would, is for somebody to do, would actually soon, compared to before parking lots here in terms of, of, you know, evening versus day, is count how many of the spaces are being used by tenants. And I think you'll find that, that half a space in urban Cambridge would work. And I think you will find that people are financing that. And you can do market studies and things like that too. But I, I, I don't know the full range in particular, so I don't, that's a personal comment.
So just moving right along?
Sure. Okay. So, okay. So one of the things we did, and I'm going to speak even more in depth, was look at where, if you, if you look at, this is about, because the public realm is just as much a matter of, particularly matters heavily with what you're walking past as what you're walking along, is look at areas where as new projects, development comes in or changes might come to buildings, for example, in Forest City, these are places where retail or otherwise active, pedestrian-friendly active uses should be, very much should be priorities. In other words, required or negotiated for as opposed to other areas. Does that make sense? I should spend more time on this. Now let's talk about retail, cultural, nonprofit diversity. So we're now 25% of the, we're now, this is the, the third goal. And we spent a lot of time talking about how to maintain the, the variety, the value of long-time businesses, ensure that the kind of diversity that has marked Central Square would continue to characterize it going forward. And we looked at a number of tools for doing this and we looked at it in the context of over time, retail rents will go up, incomes in this area are going to go up. And so we need to find a way, how should I say it, to channel that market, not, not just follow. Does this make sense? And so we looked at some of the things we talked about, which is reserving certain, at least a third of the space for small businesses, I think it was under 1,500 square feet if I remember correctly. Yeah. And a third for larger businesses, which I remember is over 5,000 square feet, it went up to 5,000. Preventing formal retail, which we talked about, removing the fast food cap, but in the spirit of getting more small food, beverage shops. And, and if you want to talk more about that, that might even, Iran can sort of weigh in on how to do that. Encouraging more side street retail and services, long streets, probably like Norfolk, obviously Bishop Allen, parts of Green Street. Where, and then encouraging businesses to, where retail won't work, but it's a street that people walk along, encouraging other activities and help animate the street. And they can be, be able to look in and watch children playing or, or art uses or not, not the office space particularly, if it has a relationship to community, so folks are coming and going from it. And, and this is where things, I think, is really making difference, but also it's, it's going to, this is where a good, strong city can help with that. Exempting ground floors from EPIR calculation in return for these things. Now, the immediate point is of course made, well, what if you get a nice pool store for a year and you've given somebody free, you know, space for EPIR for 50 years? And I think the answer back, and I think is the right answer, is that you will be negotiating with each of these folks and will have a chance, based on the development, the goals for that space, etcetera, to work something out. It could be anything from their contributing to a fund over time that would ensure that that space can be subsidized or agreements as to the kinds of users or there are, there are a range of mechanisms to do this. But I think it would be hard to make this recommendation in many cities, but it's worth making and it can be made in Cambridge. I thought I saw a frown on the screen. Okay, okay.
Not, not.
Yeah. Okay. No, not a frown of the idea, but it, it's, it's going to take work in every park, it's really worth it. So then, yeah, markets, well, basically places where it's really inexpensive to start a business. There are a lot of very creative folks here, which you all know. And one of the great secrets is empowering people to start businesses these days and providing cheap space for a good idea to take off and succeed with a market and people walking by and a great place is, can be terrific and done in the right way, it doesn't compete with, but buildings interest in the area and therefore business for established businesses. A lot of interest, the winter market is something people talk a lot about. The farmer's market is something that people talk a lot about, finding ways to find a more permanent home and maybe the public realm would be part of this. Facade improvements clearly matter and you're doing a good job of that. And then we come to something that you all addressed earlier, because that was a hugely good point to address, which is really making sure that storefront spaces are filled. And that's in everybody's interest. And the, actually, the category I didn't remember to mention was pop-up retail, which is supposedly wants to experiment with something. This younger guy has an idea, a new national, it doesn't matter the details, but he isn't sure his model's going to work. He could come here and do this for three months and see if it works. You know, obviously Christmas or Halloween and other times are kind of obvious, but people have ideas, the city can work with them and the, or the association and the property owners to make it happen. And particularly if you have an agreement that allows you to do this as part of the development agreement, that's, you're even in a stronger position to, to do that. Sometimes we use the, the initials BID. We, I would, sometimes I'd say, I think a strongest association, and this is probably an overly clear presentation, is, is clearly a real help here. Now clearly it has to be one that is engaged with the residential community, which seems to be happening. And is, it has to be sensitive to the wide range of businesses that are here and users etcetera, which certainly seems to be happening. But when it works, it can work really well. And we, we periodically say, we think it would be great if it could evolve into a bid. And I, that's, that's another discussion that folks need to have, but I think that would provide a tool for doing many of the things in this process that would be of value to the city and the community. So then I'll finish, near finish with connecting people to the square. This is not just a matter, certainly of, you know, trees, tree-marking streets and fixing pavement and, and all those sorts of things, but it's also a matter of providing an environment that's fun to walk along. You know, it's more interesting to walk past a place where folks are living and they're coming out of their doors and there's a small business at the corner, maybe a little park of folks playing in a parking lot. And the idea of literally weaving Central Square and the Central Square neighborhoods more together into an integral community, it's, not that it isn't integral in a social sense now, but physically, so just to really encourage that, we felt was very important. So you didn't feel there was sort of a little bit of no man's land on, on either side. And again, programming activities between neighborhood and Mass Ave can be just a great way to bring folks together. Improve wayfinding, for example, to the University Park, Park. So I'm going to finish, this is more about strategies than probably goals, but how do we leverage public and private investments? Because this is clearly about tapping into greater value to achieve greater public benefits as opposed to try and hold that, that greater value off because it's, it was a threat, which it could be. So we come to the city parking lots. And city parking lots have actually become quite valuable and they, they represent value that you can choose to spend a lot, you can choose to spend a parking lot, you can choose to spend it on affordable, at least income housing, you're parking below at a park, you could, if you can find some more financing, spend it on a park. But it would appear, for lots of reasons, that this is a good time to take a look at this asset and make sure that you're going to use it in a way that is, you know, consistent with your mission and quality of my goals. And I think there was pretty broad support for this. And I have to say, one of the great things about this committee was it represented lots of perspectives, business owners, residents, property owners, developers. And so everybody kind of recognized you have to replace parking for businesses to stay alive. And we want to really make sure that we're not encouraging driving. In fact, if you add 1,000 to 2,000 residents living within a five-minute walk to the square, that, that, it can sort of help tip the balance to a more neighborhood-oriented clientele for businesses. It's a way to encourage more businesses. And one of the nice things about 1,000 to 2,000 is that's a range where it can really make a tangible impact on a main street, particularly if it's less than five minutes away. Does that make sense? So it's, and that can be also a way to balance maybe a trade-off between parking and new vehicles. A sustainable future is clearly very important. This is something where really, Suzanne and the city took, took the lead and if you want to ask, but we have a lot of programs in place that we basically took advantage of.
Can I just ask if we are the potential to focus on this area for more, for solar, for more alternative energy, district energy, as we go forward and do, if we do some zoning recommendations, we can include those kinds of things and ways to.
Yes.
Do the area differently in terms of energy?
Yes, particularly the Osborne Triangle where you're going to have a lot of change. But yes, any, anytime you have new buildings near each other, you can really begin to look at shared energy and, and create an equal district and.
So how much development potential does there really have in the Osborne Triangle after something that's just already gone there? I guess that's, I don't have a clear picture of that. I mean, I think about the Luvartis being in there and Shire, what's left?
Luvartis has 22 acres.
I know there, there, but are they, isn't it all done?
Well, outspoken for.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is there, so we're talking about what to do in the Osborne Triangle, isn't, how much of it is all done? How much of it is left to?
Ben has reminded me, we just basically did a series of test studies and things are more likely to change there than other places. It came to about 1,000 to 2 million square feet, which means.
In the Osborne Triangle, so we better get on, on the, on the stick on that.
On the residential part, I've never heard that mentioned before, the Smeake. Oh, I'm glad to hear.
Be better than, yeah.
And I think it's a great place for residential. It's a great place to create a much more neighborhood-friendly main street, actually. Taller buildings, not, great, big buildings, taller buildings that basically engage the street with stores and folks across the street. There are a lot of real opportunities there.
There are also opportunities along the Mass Ave edge of the Osborne Triangle, if you can think of, there's a number of infill, yeah, like Korean store or adjacent to the museum, I mean, real land area, there are some, and then you have the U-Haul site, for instance. So, so those are some of the sites that would offer potential.
Isn't the U-Haul site flower and?
No.
On the other side.
Oh, the, oh, the other U-Haul.
Yeah, the other U-Haul.
Well, you know, what I think in this whole vision isn't whole enough is that there is the other side of Mass Ave. And so when you get to the corner where Paradise is, everything going, going toward the river is like you turn out of your mind as if it's not there. If MIT were good enough to give someone of those industrial-looking buildings over to some sort of a market or art galleries or some, because that's a very real neighborhood that none of us is going to, it's, it's the earliest Forest City, I'd call it. It's just the people don't go there because they don't want to be there because there's nothing there for us. But it's a valid part of the city and it's vast. The area between Mass Ave going down to Albany Street Shelter is quite a height and most of us won't hike because there's nothing there for us. And we do have a large institutional owner who could make decisions that would enlighten a whole quadrant of the city that, that is not discussed hardly anywhere because it's so walled off in our minds because there's nothing there inviting us.
What if you got a wave in its on the ground floor?
Any destination thing can enlighten the area in a way that you.
I'm getting, I'm getting cheers from the audience.
Okay. I, I would suggest, my experience in working with this committee, any part of Cambridge you want to have, if it wasn't in our study area, they would be willing to take on.
Well, what I'm thinking of is, you know, we mentioned the markets in DC, but this south of Washington, SOLO Market in the South End is extraordinarily good and it really is operating in what was a dead area. And our area like that is this area I'm trying to refer to. We, we should build Dream the Bigger Dream.
Let me just, Frank, we have more or less officially another 20 minutes and I think you've concluded your presentation? No?
Close to it.
So, so.
So, it's a question I raised earlier, I still haven't heard the answer to is, we're trying to increase the, the housing to drive the increase in the retail or the street like privacy that we want to see, that we need more people living nearby to support the retail locally that we want to see on the ground floor. I guess I'm wondering, when you, when you talk about raising the height limits, like that is, if you calculated, so if we raise the height limits, how much housing can you get, whether or not that is sufficient to make the kind of market difference in the policy?
Yeah. Okay. So there's a, we actually, in our office, have been very interested in that question. And I'm sorry, who was, you asked it and I have to answer it. And for a lot of time, actually, you know, we first did it as part of the Eastern Cambridge study, did a number of years ago, and worked with Hammackini to basically, and we tested this again and again, getting the same numbers, basically say that particularly for the kind of retail that everybody is thinking about, I think, residents are a much better, are a much more potent source of market than our workers, but certainly community, so that they can help. communities, so that they can help. That, based on rents, and cost of business, and a whole series, and incomes, disposable incomes, we're looking at here, that between 1,000 and 2,000 housing units is enough to do a number of things. One is to create a threshold of disposable income to support, this has to be within five to 10 minutes, so, to interest developers in creating a new block of Main Street, for example, that's not the issue here. That doesn't provide all the support, but it's the core of support that then can support a destination that others come to. And for a place like Central Square, this, the 1,000 to 2,000 is a threshold where you really begin to see a tangible difference for existing businesses and demand for neighborhood-oriented businesses, because you've basically given a, you've given a critical mass boost to local support, and it's within, preferably, a five-minute walk. That's a, a five-minute walk, less a 10-minute walk, very little beyond that is where you can really make a difference when you add housing for Main Street. And people may walk more here, but boy, was that all true.
So, because you're talking about, like, the distance in terms of walking, I guess I'm wondering in terms of the number of new housing units...
Yeah, 1,000 to 2,000, I think way that was part of, I mean, if we had only gotten to 500, we probably would have had a very different set of attitudes in terms of discussion, and we got to 4,000, it was, oh my gosh. But the fact that 1,000 to 2,000, probably close to 2,000, feels right, at least in terms of many of the things that the committee supported, I think led us to feel that we could constantly say that, that new mixed-income housing would have a very real impact at this scale. Is that a question, Suzanne? The 1,000 to 2,000, 1,000's a threshold. If you don't take 1,000's within a five-minute walk, you're probably not making a huge difference. If you're getting 3,000 or 4,000, you're making a very big difference. 1,000 to 2,000, you're gonna have a real impact, it would attract more businesses, it would change the nature of businesses, because it's, particularly restaurants that serve that market, things like that.
So we want 1,000 to 2,000 new use of housing?
Within a five-minute walk, ideally a five-minute walk.
And this is the height that gets us to that one?
Yeah, yeah.
This, actually, it's a bigger, it's a longer space, though, I mean, so when you talk about five-minute walk, actually walking from one end to the square to the other is more than five minutes.
Yeah, once you get people there, they keep walking, it's, it's walking you to a place, people just don't, everyone thinks they walk more than they do.
Mark, and Susan.
Mark, this was Watson. I, I just, I think on the zoning issue relative, I think it was inherent in Catherine's question, is, right now, I think in the recommendations from the committee spoke to increasing density and height for housing. And the idea of that is, and this is the other question I think you were asking, is that, you know, lab space is $65 a foot, and office space is $43 a foot, and housing is half that. So if you want a development to build house under the current zoning, they won't, they won't. And if you want them to build, if you want more housing, it won't fit in the zoning envelope we have. So if you want housing, the zoning implications of more housing are, probably we haven't learned enough, actually, but the increase in discrepancy between the actual allowed to build, and office, lab, and housing, one, and two, allow higher heights for housing. So that's why those are in the recommendation.
Thank you.
Susan. Well, Susan, I recognize Susan.
Um, I'm, I just wanted to...
Could you stand up, Susan? Oh, God. Could you change places, Susan?
I guess I just wanted to unveil a little bit of minority opinion on the committee, and just make sure that there's not this monolithic belief that we're all 100% kind of, some of us had questions about these parking issues, very significant answers, questions about parking issues, and questions about the allowable height and density, and I think one thing that made it okay for me to sleep at night was realizing that this can't happen across the whole square, that there are only certain parcels that it's appropriate to have this kind of high intensity, and that it's not going to all of a sudden be that Mass Ave is, you know, 10 stories high all the way from Kendall Square to Harvest Square. So I think, you know, as much as we're writing recommendations for changes, I still think we're already looking at individual parcels and what is appropriate for those parcels.
Yeah, that's a very good point. And I may be the first to say, without any humility, that in 10 years, the world is changing faster, society is changing faster, our economy is changing faster than it ever has, you'll probably want to take another look in 10 years and see what's worked, and really want to change.
Well, I think that's one of the...
This is, so feedbacking all, this is about the point that you have up here about transfer of development rights. So, in the point before, you're saying raise the zoning to 140, 260 feet, and then would there be the transfer of development rights from another parcel on top of that 160? Is that the way we work? Oh, I'm getting a different...
Not greater height, there would be greater if they are in that height.
We did allow for 20 feet of additional height to accommodate the transferred...
Yeah, okay.
So you give cap, that it would only be 20 additional feet that could be transferred? So if you could have two parcels each, remaining 10 feet, I don't know, is that a...
Well, they would donate square footage.
I don't mean donate, they would...
Well, I mean, they would transfer square footage, and the height is just to accommodate that square footage, so isn't that, if one parcel donates 10 feet, then two would be 20, but...
So, and then, the parcel that donated, or the transferred development rights to a now larger building, how do you dodge, you know, those rights to go on for that parcel?
The way we have this, we have this provision already in the zoning ordinance for other parts of the city, and we imagine that this would follow a similar path, which is that there is a special permit on both the donating and the receiving parcel, so that then it gets reported in the deed for both parcels and cannot be easily modified.
So it would just be easily modified?
Well, it's, it's an, it's an indeed, but if somebody gets a, gets a modification to their special amendment, to their special permit, then it gets...
Okay, so we have a...
A few people, I just want to take the temperature of the room for how much longer we want to go. As long as it takes, another half an hour? Members wish to speak up? We're also supposed to stop at 7:30, we haven't finished the presentation yet.
I don't know, we're having dinner at 6:45, so I don't want to be late.
You're already done, right? You're cooked? Well, do you think we could, we want to finish the presentation, then pick up, pick up comments then, and see how we go? Keep speaking along.
Yeah, okay, Iran is saying something, she often says to me, move back. Okay, so, here, this is about how the variety of heights, I think, ultimately mattered more than the committee, I mean, heights certainly mattered, in fairness to Susan's question, it was more an assurance that this produced variety. So we looked at, what do you get with 55 to 60-foot height, stepping back to Bishop Allen, this is, I always forget the corner of what it was, Norfolk, Norfolk, yeah, okay. We then said, well, what if we raised it, and still have a setback, and enough to create a larger, more public space, some middle-income housing, and, how high is this one?
The, I'll get it.
Yeah. We then looked at, well, what if we went to the 140 feet, which I think we're doing, we're dominating, in most cases, the, 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 the 140 feet. What, and what we did was look at the economics of these buildings, to say, if we didn't, you know, if you let somebody come in and build 140 feet, and you don't ask for anything back, then whoever owns that piece of land gets the full increment in value from 60 feet and 140 feet. If you say instead, you have to pay for a larger public space, maybe you pay for the public room, do a deal with the city, so you have some very low-cost retail space, and you brought an existing business in that was threatened someplace else, things like that, and middle-income housing, that this increment would be a good chunk that used to pay for that. So basically, you are transform, transferring it from a, what's the term, a jackpot, there's another term, to the owner into public benefits.
Windfall.
Windfall, thank you, yeah, turning windfall into public benefits. This is also, I think, as, as architect Colleen very well put it, making the more real for housing the FARs that are around. So this involves a little increase in actual developable area, but it allows the heights and building configurations, in most cases, that will allow that FAR to be realized as a housing. And there's 140, what's, how much of this FAR is going to be house? 30, 30, what's it now, is it? Yeah, go ahead, okay.
It goes up from 2.75 for commercial to 4.0 for residential.
Speaking along.
Yeah, okay, all right, so then we said, well, what does this look like if you're coming from other perspectives? So here we are, looking down north, and this assumes that, this is the Maygard Development, and nothing has happened on the city parking lot. Here we have a 45-foot-tall building with nothing, the permitted height matter would be 45 feet along Bishop Allen. Here we, I'm sorry, this is 45 feet, set, not on Bishop Allen, but new development just on Mass Ave, this is then the 45-foot building on Bishop Allen, with nothing taller on the site. This assumes, probably, this is probably by 80 or 100 feet on the site, setback based on the requirements of the, of the study, and this wouldn't be if we went to the full maximum height and, and setback. And we said, well, you could, well, you could have a park, there are various things we could do, and this is just giving a sense of walking along the streets, and what different things we're hoping to do, so, on that note.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this presentation.
Uh, more questions and comments? I'm sure we could, we really could go on endlessly, but first, Mika, and then...
I did want to alert us all to go back, Newt is actually a little bit ahead of us in the sense that they have parking lots, Austin Street is the name of the parking lot, and they currently have an R P out to try to do exactly what we're thinking about doing. So it's a smaller scale perhaps, but it's exactly the kind of things that I've heard talked about, where we need to conserve some parking, because they still want the revenue with that parking, and you develop, or you can develop this land, but you must build this, and you must build that, and it has to look like this, and it has to look like that, so, might be interesting to follow the kind of responses that they get to the R P, and will they end up actually building.
I forgot your first name.
Brenda. I just have a quick comment about, I want to step back to the Osborn Triangle.
Can you, can you speak to the...
Yeah, the Osborn Triangle, for a second. I see that, just like the other district, I see it as a unique opportunity for Cambridge for multiple reasons. How it connects, right now, there's a wall essentially on Main Street. You look at the historic building, it's a wall, it's kind of messy, unpleasant, while cutting across it isn't very pleasant, and then you go to Mass Ave. Rather than being that, it could become, if it's really conceived correctly, a mixed-use district that's really combined office and residential, that is very pedestrian-friendly, you could even close off some of the streets so people can walk, there could be real, you know, outdoor spaces. Right now, it's an industrial area, but it could connect all of the area for back to Mass Ave, as well as become a much more walkable area, and it's unique, because unlike the rest of the neighborhood, it's, you've got some inner parts to it that aren't, don't have main streets on it, so that, it allows that possibility to the community.
Another kind of people who, let's point out, it could become much more of a front door for every board, it's a neighborhood.
Ken?
Yes, I just want to say, to read the, one of the, the author of the Red Rippen study was a guy named Brent Ryan, who's a professor at the Department of Urban Studies at MIT, and he has written this book called Design After Decline. And I want us to appreciate the context that we're having this discussion in. So we're talking about, we don't want banks, we don't want phones, this, that, the other. And this book is about places like my native Detroit, that they are asking the neighbors to move out of the neighborhood because they can provide no services, that the city is shrinking, and it's the exact different paradigm. So please understand, in the real world, there are different, and to be fighting MIT about development, and fighting for a city, is just, in these circumstances, and this is, I'm talking about America's 10 biggest cities, and what, how five of them dropped off the list, and they went to the south, and southeastern cities moved on, where the American context, this is over, wonderful discussion, I hope everybody is treated to the wonder that it is. There was a recent web article about the downtown bid, and how much money they were gonna put in there, and they detailed what the money was. And the money is for things like, I want us to get on the good foot here and realize that the city bought some tables and chairs, and put them in some interesting spots like Carle Bear and Plaza. If only in the good weather, we could do some quite achievable things that don't cost a lot, we just need to own the stuff. And, and the, the committee that I chair, which is Public Celebration, we're planning to make a New York trip to go to Bryant Park and several other spots, to see if we can catch them in action, and see if they're good ideas, and we should be stealing their real available. And just the last thing, from Red Rippen to C2, has come the real new idea, and I'm gonna give this idea to Brent, he really is the first person, in my recollection, who brought up this middle-class housing that you could have today. Post-Randy fellow, I didn't believe it could ever happen. But we have to spend a lot more time on that idea, and I think, in some preliminary ways, I've tried to get some people who want, I mean, David Posen has built some of this kind of housing, and trying to get him at the table. There's another professor in the university, in the Department of Urban Studies that are planning, Phil Thompson, who knows something about it, knows something about a 200, quarter of a billion-dollar community betterment agreement with Harlem, where, between Harlem and Columbia, which involves masses of housing for regular people. So, I do think that this is a, I'm listening, I cannot thank the committee members enough for the time, and the love, attention, and energy you have given us, and we want to know something from our community development staff about the next steps. Who takes the baby from here is a very important, I think, big question, because if they won't do it, so...
So, we are, we've started to talk to the planning board about the zoning recommendations that have emerged from here, and we'll be working with them over the next few months, and we hope to get a zoning position based on these recommendations to you, hopefully, prior to the summer meeting.
And how about the non-zoning recommendations? Will they have at the same time, things that are related to programming and so on, and not necessarily zoning recommendations? I heard many things that sounded more like management and programming, or zoning.
Sure. They, they will be going to city manager and all of the various departments who, you know, CDP worked with, DPW, Human Services, as well as Arts Council, a lot of other departments during the course of this study, and these recommendations have gone to, and we'll, we'll continue to have conversations with those groups. If the council is interested in any specific pieces, we are happy to come back here and have further conversations about those. And of course, the SBA has, has already started to partner with all the agencies.
And the Osborn Triangle is coming also with the zoning, because I think that then it'll obviously be something pretty important to get this year, and, yeah.
I know, sorry, can you, Heather, should I do anything else? Yes, I do. So I just wanted to say that one of the things that I think we really need to think about also is that, if we build a new family housing in the square, which is a fantastic idea, we also have to make the square seem like a place that families can imagine living. I think that might have a great unusual element that we actually like moving into the middle grade of the square by... gritty, gritty square, but a lot of families would say, well, where's the safe park for my children? Where are my children going to eat? Where is my teenager going to hang out? Where is the fantastic library like that we have on Broadway? I can't picture a family living there. And so as we look at carlets and retail and public spaces, we should be thinking, how are we going to make families be able to picture themselves living here? Because I think a lot of people don't.
Thanks. Gavin, and then Nelson Baker.
Great, so I have a microphone. Keep switching, it's easier. So I'd like to make two minor points that were slightly, for example, washed over in a very fast visitation, at least, I have 16 months to me, so doing this in two hours is pretty quick. But one thing that I think was important to talk about is that we have talked about public spaces and public program, and there was also an emphasis on cultural institutions using this, not just markets. So it wasn't just about having a farmer's market, but it was about having cultural institutions and displays and things like that. And we also talked about part of the public park, and about, you know, specific representation and celebrating the identity of the square, and really emphasizing what Central Square's culture is now and was in the past. And so that was a part of it. I also just wanted to point out that when David Dixon was going through the list of the participants in the committee, and talking about how these different groups who are featured, it was, you know, business owners and landlords and developers, and I want to point out that the largest single group was residents. And many of the residents are people like Susan and I, who both live in the neighborhood and represent our institution, but overwhelmingly, the largest group was residents of the neighborhood. And so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
And I thought this, I thought I mentioned residents first, but this is, and less many, but I'm sure you would realize this, but all the things where people are expressing a degree of consensus, even from different perspectives, didn't start out that way. There were a lot of very tough discussions, people who did bring different perspectives and people who were...
Nelson Baker.
So I think what's also important, I've had conversations with, you know, Brian and his staff, our way of speaking about this, I've been saying this, since before the city debates started last year, that I think there's a lot of people who sound this committee, and as Gavin said, you had 16 months of conversations, that, you know, for me, was always at the beginning of, that you were doing a really important foundation work to then begin the conversation with the larger community. And I think it's just somebody who really, what I'm really waiting to hear, particularly from CDD, I think that's where the meetings come from, is how are we going to do it differently? How are we going to involve larger members of the community, using this as a great foundation to begin discussion, but to really just do it differently than we have. The traditional ways of sort of community engagement, community meetings, aren't, for a lot of reasons, really capturing the conversations that need to happen. Very conversation that all of you on this committee have had the incredible opportunity to hash out differences in ideas and thoughts, that same level of intensity needs to be given to the larger community. And I just think about, there are people who I have enormous amount of respect for, I have known for probably more than half my life, and we have very shared common values of what we think Cambridge is about, what we hope that Cambridge will be about, who gets to live here, what kind of experiences neighbors are going to have with one another through all the various institutions and community ways in which we interact and build community and build a sense of, this is where I want to stay, this is what I care about, this is why I'm willing to spend all these additional hours outside of work with the family to make this community so great. But we have very good visions of how to get there, and that's what this process is. And this has been a very, I think, for many people, because, you know, this process has been so important, and I think it was important, it's also, I think it's been a, I don't think it would be only my first stage, it's been a very painful experience at times, to have people who really do love being neighbors, or love living in the city together, who represent all the very essence of why this city is so interesting to live in, who have found themselves in very tense moments with people who may just have had to walk away from each other, and not be able to have the kind of conversations and the ability to have trust to stay at the table and to really hash out ideas. And so I say that I'm having that experience with people who I just care deeply about their vision and value the work that they have done to make this community something that I just love living in and growing up in and choosing to raise children, it really is incumbent upon the city council and more importantly, CDD, to find ways, alternative ways, ways that really speak to how people live their lives today and interact with one another and work, and then create civic time, to really be able to lead that process. Having a flyer that says, we're meeting, you know, at the Area 40 Center at 2:00 on a Saturday, that cannot be, that's the serious bonus to all the other ways that we do this. How do we get people throughout the various, able to really interact with each other? I think that a lot of ideas I know that I've shared with CDD, I know my colleagues must have shared ideas, there are various ways, and there's a lot out there, there's a lot of research out there, and there's a lot of past practices that have shown alternative ways of community engagement. And I just want to say that, so for those of you who've been either on the committee or who've been attending all of these meetings now, I want to say thank you, because I know it's an exhausting, it's an exhausting for those of you who keep who are in the audience, those of you who are here, and a lot of the community who aren't able to attend, but just to think about who gets to decide what the future of Cambridge is about. Because when we talk about creating spaces, and we talk, I mean, I think, again, zoning, zoning is one tool, but it's a really important tool, that builds structures that allow us to actually live our lives, and live the kinds of communities and the kinds of spaces and do the kinds of things that represent the values and the vision of what our experiences are, and who gets to have what kind of experiences. So I just, I really just want to keep pushing to say that, because I've been having this conversation, I feel like this is where we started taking place a year and a half ago, I'm still not seeing it, and it's, you know, it's important that we do this, and you're right, you have this only two-hour conversation, so we need to have the counseling to continue having this conversation, because I think the other tricky side, and I'm in a really great position, I'm not running the real election council, but as we get closer to reelection, and even the debate about whether or not this gets televised, right, the massiness for me around that, Mark, we get the letter tomorrow that will come to you for Cambridge Day, where you said something in the article that sort of, it's not this word, but the backlash, not wanting this roundtable to be televised, is that other people are going to come televised. But that's not my point. I in fact said that I thought if we want to be televised, it should not afford this coming. I'm not opposed to it being televised, but I was, what I'm concerned about is the integrity of the council rules in place. And roundtables are about being confident that all stakeholders can come and have a really good conversation. I think that what's happening here, you can bring up a hearing if you want it, but what we'll see at the time, is that to usurp the council rules that allow for a roundtable, you'll just see less frank conversation happen, that's all. But I do think that frank conversation, and maybe it won't take place in a two-hour period in a council chamber anyway, and it really shouldn't be taken more in the neighborhood, the one-on-one conversations, the small group conversations, the large group conversations, that kind of intentional interaction, an exchange of ideas and willingness to sort of tough it up one another. Because what we're talking about is worth toughing it up one another, it's worth hearing each other's feelings and finding ways to reconnect and not feel so worried about our own visions, and seeing are there ways to sort of have a shared vision with a different, with multiple paths to get to. And I can say that my knowledge of the election makes it easier for me to kind of push into that conversation, because I think actually moving to an election year, quite frankly, it's harder to be willing to sort of take those big, bold steps that allow for that kind of intense conversation that has already, I think, had a lot of peaks and a lot of valleys. And those valleys aren't, haven't felt comfortable for a lot of people, a lot of people here and a lot of people out. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't keep doing it, and there's a lot of people who are willing to keep doing that. So I guess I just feel like I'm going to just keep pushing us to do this, because it's so essential that at the end of the day, everybody who loves this community and is willing to put the time in, if given the opportunity that makes sense to them, that they have a voice in this, and it's a real meaningful voice, and it's worth it, it's worth it. We love the city, we, I think, all of us talk about, there's no other city I can imagine in this country that I would want to live in. I've always said that, and I may have grown out here, but I choose to still live here, I choose to raise my children here, and like so many of you. So I'm just going to keep encouraging us to be willing to find additional ways than just tonight, because this tonight isn't going to get us, it's a good start, it's a good, it's important, but we have to really, again, you know, Brian's going to keep shaking his head because I keep saying this, and he knows we've had some good conversations, but see if he really, really needs to come here and put some visionary recommendations to the council, based on, you know, why they prefer to go, and that's where there's the time on. So that's what I'll say. Thank you.
Councilor Reeves?
Yeah, I think with Council Becky, the importance of the listening part is there, but I do want to say that a particular strength about the C2 process is that we got preceded by the Red Ruben process, which was also two years, which really created a group of citizens and business owners and building owners. They have a foundation of concepts about how cities and places are made, et cetera and so on. And I think one of the huge benefits of Red Ruben was that a number of these people got to travel and look at DC and see things together and understand that there are places that are doing it better, and that the only vision we have don't have to be the ones that are right here. And so, but I see, I'm not sure, it seems traditionally, you have a charette, you invite everybody in, CDD seems to be fond of the notion, you know, we have 36 meetings, so that means that we heard from people. I agree with you, it is the election year, but I kind of hope that the election is a kind of referendum on whether we're going or not going. And because I think there's where, if the vision is not to change anything, then we should have a different group in government who can realize nothing. So it's, 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 I mean, this, seriously, and I also don't believe that we can just sort of listen to the same type of people on every project and believe that we've heard from them, because the demographics of the city are vastly changed, and there can't be 76% of the people that lived here five years or less. That's a lot of people who we haven't heard from, but they seem to be going along with what it is we're trying to do with the best of our abilities and the moments of our lives. So I'm pleased that trying to hear everybody is important, but I do think, at the end of the day, while you have a city council, is to come up with a policy that will produce the place and the quality of life that most people want. And I think we have been, in terms of city surveys, of people's happiness, with the direction of things, in terms of, I mean, I'm old as now, I, when I first brought up about having outdoor dining, I was told that would be impossible forever, because it was a public sidewalk, and you couldn't have alcohol there, you could never close Mass Ave. Look how far we've come. So I think we've been about the dynamic of change, because I think that's the chain of human existence we're in. And, but I think we should always need to be listening, that's the job of the elected position.
Any other closing comments from folks? I think the closing is what we're about by now. Nelson Baker?
Very briefly, I think a lot of this is a last meeting that we had. I want to thank all the members of the public who participated in the process. I think this is, this is really the beginning of the dialogue now for the city council going forward. And you've given us an awful lot to think about, and I think this is really a very, very exciting time for Central Square and for the city of Cambridge, and one that I look forward to a lot more dialogue as we go forward. And, you know, I want to say, I think you look at this, and I think this is what you were getting at every other, and we talked about this at the meeting, the last meeting that we had, is how do we see, if we come to agreement that this is a vision that we want to see, how is it that we can actually affect that change? And, you know, what I don't want to see happen is all the good work that people did, have the report and the recommendations placed on a shelf somewhere, and 10 years from now, us saying the same thing and calling David back and saying we need to do this again. I think what we really need to figure out is how with the complexities of the square, the ownership, a lot of small owners, how can we actually get people together and affect change? And that's what I'm, I think it's going to be the biggest challenge that we have, and one that I look forward to solving.
And along with what you were saying, I think you're talking about the zoning coming forward and the recommendations going to different departments, but this idea of the city using its power of its land is not something that we have an action set for just yet. Here we are, only there is five or six parking lots in critical places in the square that might be, instead of pointing at everybody else and saying, why don't you, you name, fill a label, the owner, why don't you do something? Well, I think we need to point the fingers at ourselves and say to ourselves, well, why don't we do something? Why don't we say, look for an RFP or an RFQ that says, how do we make use of this to make a development happen? I think that's...
That's exactly my point, that I think that we are a major, the city of Cambridge is a major player in this, and I think that, you know, somebody mentioned it earlier, but, you know, about a library, and having a great library in Central Square. You know, we have a library in Central Square, I'm not certain that we would all agree that it's a great library. And so I think there are a lot of ways that we can pool resources and do an RFP process, engaging, you know, there's limitations over what the Cambridge City Council can do as a government entity, and that might mean pulling in another planning group to help us to be able to be the conduit for this change, but that's a dialogue we have to have.
And an action step that's not bounded by zoning and referrals. So it looks like I can say thank you very much to everyone, thank you for all the participants in the Central Square Committee, and thank you to all of you who came to see me to hear this meeting, and thank you, of course, to you for doing another great job, and to the staff, et cetera. Thank you very much.